Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this morning's Planning Development Control Meeting. It's Wednesday, the 19th of October, and the time is 9:30 approximately. The clock here is about only two minutes late. So apologies, first of all, a few housekeeping points. The members of the committee are sitting down each side of the block table, as it were. I am councillor Theresa Evans, and I chair the committee. And my vice-chair is sitting to my right, councillor Jane Rutter. We also have Julie Pinnock, who's Service Lead for Environment, and Lorna Hutchings, who heads up the planning management. The case officer always sits there, and Nicola Clayton is case officer for the first meeting and is already in position. We have, I think this is your new, your first meeting, Daniel Lucas, who's our legal adviser. Welcome. And Matthew Watson, who does the clerking of the committee. We are not expecting a fire alarm, so if you hear the fire alarm sound, then please act accordingly. Obviously, do not use the lift, and the assembly point is down in Abbey Gardens. Please, could you turn your mobile phones off or to silent? And I think that's all I need to say. This meeting is being recorded live and then will be placed on the council's YouTube. I do have something to say extra about that. Oh, here it is. If you watch the video recording of this meeting on YouTube and wish to read subtitles, you can do this by going to playback and performance in your YouTube settings and checking the boxes to always show captions and include auto-generated captions. If that doesn't mean anything to you, but you do wish to use subtitles, please contact the city council, and they will help you with that facility. So we move on to the agenda. Apologies and deputy members.
Morning, Chair. Morning, members. Just one apology from councillor McLean, who's been replaced by councillor Cook today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Cleare?
Thank you, Chair. Agenda item five, Fairhaven-Fontley Road-Titchfield, is in my ward, but I would like to declare a personal but not a prejudicial interest because I've had no involvement with this application whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. My interest is exactly the same, ward member for the area, but no involvement in the planning application. Right, so we then move on to the business items. Could I ask members if you could accept the update sheet as an addendum to the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. And we move then on to the first item on the agenda, which... Minutes. Good job the vice-chair is there.
Chair, just to advise, the last meeting took place on the 7th of October, and those minutes haven't been produced in time for this one, so they'll be carried forward to the next meeting.
Yes. We had to delay the meeting last time, so there's a very short gap. I have approved them, but they haven't got through the system yet, so there are no minutes. But thank you, vice-chair, for reminding me. So the first item is Agenda item five, Fairhaven-Fontley Road-Titchfield, Fairham, Hampshire. The case officer is Nicola Clayton, who is here already, and when you're ready, Nicola, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. As Chair mentioned, the application is Fairhaven on Fontley Road in Titchfield. The application site is outside of the settlement boundary and therefore in the countryside. We have a location plan here, and... So we've got a star point here, just to show you where the application site is. So it's Fairhaven, which is accessed off Fontley Road. It's a detached dwelling in the countryside. And here we have the block plan, and the application is for a detached dwelling to the side of the property, and it's going to share the same access as the existing dwelling house. And here we can see the existing access for the dwelling house off Fontley Road. Just further into the photograph, there's actually gates, so it's a gated access. A little bit bright on the screen, but these are the proposed floor plans of the dwelling house. It's a four-bedroom dwelling house. And here we have the elevations of the dwelling house. Just a few photos, just so you can see surrounding the site. So this is a view towards Fontley Road, showing part of the garden. And then this is the view towards the catfishing lake at the rear of the site. This is the boundary with the adjoining property. There's a dense hedgerow. And then the application is recommended for refusal on the following grounds. It's contrary to policy MTR-4, as it's a new dwelling in the countryside. There's also reasons for refusal in relation to trees, transport, and ecology. Now, the trees was added on to the update sheet, following advice from the tree officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicola. So we move now to the public speaking, and we have one public speaker today, who is David Rothery, supporting the application. Good morning, Mr. Rothery. So when you're ready, if you could press the microphone button, yeah, and you have three minutes, and three minutes will be shown on the screen. And I'll have to stop you at the end of three minutes, I'm afraid.
Thank you, members. It's unfortunate that it's taken six months to reach today's recommendation. In that time, all five, now six, refusal reasons could have been cleared and a permission been issued. That is still possible if suitable conditions are applied to remove each of the reasons for refusal. The NPPF states that LPAs should seek solutions rather than problems, and approved applications for sustainable development, and they should work proactively with applicants. Unfortunately, in six months, we've only had one inquiry, and that was in relation to the tree, which a agriculture report was provided for. The other five reasons, as per the agenda papers, have not been subject to any discussion at all with the applicant. If you look at reasons three and four, they cover biodiversity, nitrate neutrality, and ecological details, the applicant is quite happy to deal with all those by way of conditions, providing reports, and addressing all the concerns. In terms of the highway issues, there is one single access which would be widened to create a shared access. That access would also benefit from a wider visibility display, because all the frontages are in the applicant's ownership, and he would dedicate that to the local highway authority for such displays. There's been no criticism in terms of the architectural design, and again, in NPPF, it states that rural housing in determining applications greatly should be given to outstanding innovative designs, and that raise design standards. Coming on then to the Crooks policy, and that's the first one. The site is not an open field. It's not a paddock. It's not an orchard. It's the side garden to a residential property, a residential property in the countryside that is agreed. The subdivision would not harm the use or functioning of the horse property. It has its own access, which we retained. It has own parking and own private garden amenity space. Whilst applications should be considered on their own planning merits, the council should apply this consistently across all applications as material planning considerations require. There is a plot subdivision further down the road, Moors Hill Farmhouse, which gained planning permission for a pair of semi-detached houses in August 2005, and then two separate bungalows in 2019. There is no difference between that proposal and the applicant's proposal. I therefore ask you to approve this scheme, subject to conditions to address the issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rothery. Don't go away, because it could be that there are questions, a clarification, which I can see there are, from the committee. So councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, sir. Pre-application, did you seek pre-application advice?
That's mine.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? No. So thank you very much indeed for coming along this morning. If you'd like to return to your seat. Nicola, any updates on public speaking that you thought?
Just to clarify, that because the application was contrary to policy MTR-4, so in principle we wouldn't accept a new dwelling in the countryside, therefore there wasn't negotiations over the other reasons for refusal. If we were supporting the application, we would have requested further information in terms of ecology reports and further other information, visibility space, et cetera. But I think because it is an objection in principle, we didn't then negotiate further information.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So, members, we're turned to our report on Principal of Development, page 13. And then impact on the character and appearance of the area, page 14. Then South Downs National Park, it is 6.4 kilometers from the park. Historic environment and neighbouring amenity. And then sustainable transport. And then quite a long section on page 16 and 17 on ecology and biodiversity. And then anything else anyone wants to ask on the conditions?
Yes, please, my Chair. Just the with regards to the tree comment, that no further insufficient details been applied. Was that because it was outside of the area development, and so no questions were asked purely on that element?
Probably, but Nicola will clarify.
Regarding the trees, we did ask for further information, which was submitted, and in the update sheet, the tree officer commented and still believed that it would still be a reason for refusal, because he still wasn't happy with the information that was submitted.
Okay. So that's the end of questions on the report debate. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid for me, this is a very clear-cut example of an attempt to build a new dwelling in the countryside and...
Thank you. Any other contributions? Councillor Pearson, and then councillor Cleare?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree with what councillor Rutter said, so I won't repeat it. It is in the countryside, I'm not going to repeat it. It's unfortunate. I like the building, but it's in the countryside, a new build, so you couldn't even say it's a replacement of an existing building. Ecology in the countryside is important. I'm worried about proximity to the lake behind, nitrate pollution, which may go from your site, not deliberately, but it's close by the railway line, as I recall. Very familiar with that lane, and I frequently go down to a garden nursery just up the lane from this site. And it's... There's so many questions. You say it could be answered by conditions, Chair, but they didn't come for pre-discussion. They could have been settled then, if they were possible to be settled. But the unsamantable problem, as Nicola quite rightly says, is the fact that it's in the countryside and it's new build. That, I'm sorry, as much as I like the building, the design of the building, that's insurmountable. I'm a militant side, as you know, defender of the open spaces, and this comes against that. I'm sorry.
Thank you, councillor Cleare.
Thank you, Chair, but I think councillor Pearson has probably covered exactly what I was going to say. It is a countryside location, contrary to policies MTR-4 and DM-21. Does not show or have an operational need, so I will support the recommendation. Thank you.
And I would just add that if this weren't, if this wasn't in the countryside, it would be a very acceptable proposal, because it is a nice house. But our policies dictate that it's countryside, and there is then the question of precedent along all the other open spaces down this road, and then up to Titchfield Lane, which is joined up with. And it will change the character of the area as well. So yes, I'm joining my colleagues in refusing this application. Are we at that point where we come to the vote? So this application has been recommended for refusal. All those in favour, please show.
Sorry, Chair, that's seven, no, nine members, Chair. Sorry, I can't see all the hands.
Thank you very much. So that application is refused for the reasons I set out in the report. Thank you very much. We move on then to... This would just be a short break while we wait for the case officer to arrive. So we move on to Agenda item six, which is SDNP, South Downs National Park, slash This is an amended planning application for two single-story log cabins for tourist accommodation, and it's at Kingsmead, and it's associated with, I think, Falsted, the plot. So case officer is Lisa Booth. Good morning, Lisa. Are you ready to go?
Yes, I'm ready to go, thank you.
So we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Okay, thank you. I just want to draw your attention to, there's a few things in the update sheet. I think the wording has been amended, and there are some additional informatives which laid out. Okay, this is an application. It's land at Kingsmead. I'd just like to point out, it's not actually related with Falsted. It's a separate parcel of land, different ownership. The application's for two log cabins for tourist accommodation, land off Kingsmead, near Wickham. The site comprises of an open area of land measuring 0.24 hectares, which is mainly later grass with a dense backdrop of trees along the eastern boundary. The land is designated as countryside and outside of the settlement boundary, and is currently devoid of structures, features, and features. Vehicle access is via an existing access point from Kingsmead, which connects to the A32. There are a number of dwellings along Kingsmead, set in large plots, and the Roebuck Inn is located to the east of the site. There are sinks and ancient woodland outside the perimeters of the site, to the north-east and south-east, and various public rights of way. There is further open land to the west, which is in same ownership, beyond a posted rail fence, which is mainly grass and some trees. The amended scheme proposes the erection of two small, single-story timber lodges comprising of two bedrooms, a lounge, kitchenette, bathroom, and attached bike sheds. The main policy for the proposal is ST23 Sustainable Tourism, which is set out in form in the report. Policy ST23 does not preclude standalone tourism, which this is. The site has good connection with a number of public rights of way, such as Pilgrim's Trail, West Walk, Part of the Forests of Beer, Meem Valley Rail, Arthur and Bridaway, Wayfarers' Walk in Soberton, with other tourism spots and services en route and nearby. The site for tourism has an excellent site for introducing users to all that the South Downs National Park has to offer. With regard to discussion use of unsustainable transport, it's noted that the holiday units are within half a mile walking distance of Wood End Car Park, at Apocops Car Park on Heath Road in Soberton Heath. Both of these destinations, by definition, are encouraging the use of the car to access the national park for day trips. It's therefore quite reasonable, from a sustainability perspective, to permit these holiday units, as they provide self-catering accommodation to access the national park from within the national park, without the need to drive daily to a destination, such as one of the above car parks. Cycles for on-the-journey journeys to different local points of interest are also being made available as part of the holiday package. The site is not in an isolated area due to the ribbon of development at Kingsmead and Chippewa to the southwest. The scheme is now more landscape-led and provides additional biodiversity and ecological enhancements, and lots of additional planting, which is sorely lacking from the site, maximising this further with the use of solar energy and green roofs. Comprehensive statement, which is contained within the revised planning statement to satisfy the above requirements of policy ST23 was submitted with the application, and it is considered that the principle of providing tourist accommodation on the site is acceptable in accordance with the aims of the policy. The proposed timber lodges are significantly reduced in size from the originally submitted scheme and of a modified design using black timber boarding with green roofs. They comprise a single-story accommodation, providing modest accommodation, two bedrooms, living eating area, small bathroom, and external storage shed for bicycles. Measure six meters by nine meters, and approximately 3.3 meters to the ridge. These lodges are to be set in a landscape plot, including a 150-meter squared wetland area, wildlife pond, extensive tree, and native hedgerow planting, which... area, wildlife pond, extensive tree, and native hedgerow planting, which enhance the existing and coexists with the Sylvane setting. The proposed development will have minimal adverse impact on character appearance or amenity of the area. The site is discreetly located behind the existing properties, and significantly enclosed by trees on the immediate boundaries and in the wider locality. The site only has a small frontage to the road from which views to the site may be glimpsed. There are no views into the site from the wider locality, except for from East Beer Cottage, which is approximately 30 metres from the boundary hedge to the proposed lodges. Although there are no existing buildings to reuse, what is proposed does not impact on the characters and setting of the area landscape, and there are no objections from the landscape officer. The buildings will be quite hidden from longer-distance views. The planting at the southern end of the site is intended to enhance the landscape setting and increase biodiversity, and provide a green buffer of use from East Beer Cottage. With regard to neighbouring amenity, the proposals are set away from other neighbouring properties, so they're not considered to have any detrimental impact. Any structures are set far enough away from the neighbouring sites to ensure no overbearing or overshadowing can occur. Objections containing potential noise and disruption from users of the lodges have been expressed, and have been considered as part of this assessment. The lodges are size-restrictive, so they will not be able to be used by extremely large parties, which I think is the main concern, and are considered to be far enough away from neighbouring properties to not cause detrimental impact on amenities. We cannot predict how people behave while on holiday, but if issues of noise did arise, then this would be a matter to be dealt with under environmental health legislation. Environmental health have in fact not raised any concerns in their consultation response. Extensive amendments and ecological reports have been submitted, and since the application was submitted, now the scheme presents a biodiversity risk scheme. Access, if I can just cover that, is from Kingsmead, and the current access, the current joint access arrangements with Felstead, which is on the map there, is to be separated by removal of the existing posted rail fence, which has already been done, I'll show you a photo in a moment, and moved over two metres. The implications of the proposed development on highway use and proposed realignment of the access have been examined by the applicant's own highway engineers and Hampshire County Council highways, were consulted and raised no objections. However, the revision to the access, as required by Hampshire County Council highways, necessitate the removal of a Lawson Cypress adjacent to the road to facilitate the access. So some of the other trees along the access have also been removed, some it was said were storm damaged. Based on conclusion, based on the evidence submitted and the consultation responses, the application is considered to be acceptable in accordance with the development plan, and is recommended for approval, and proposal will not cause any harms to the landscape, natural beauty, wildlife, or cultural heritage of the national park. Said that, I will just show you some photographs. This is a plan which shows some of the trails that are close by, so the site is in the middle of that. Got the Pilgrim's Trail, Meon Valley Rail, and West Walk. I mean, you asked for the site in conjunction with the South Downs National Park, which I've shown there, so the South Downs National Park is the hatched part, and there's, you can just about see the green where the site is. This is the entrance. Application quite a long time, so this has been put in fairly recently, and some of the trees along the side boundary have been taken out, and there'll be extra planting to the right, where you can see the grass. That was what it was like originally. Access to Felstead. Right, looking at East Beer Cottage. Back, you see the posted rail fence onto the other area of land. Thank you, Chairman. Include, Chairman.
I'm so sorry, I thought you were still going through the slides, I know we've seen them before, but, right. So thank you very much. So we have one objector speaking today, and that is Jane Denley. Good morning, Miss Denley. So when you're ready, you press the button at the bottom of the microphone to get the light on. Do you wish, do you want to do that? Do you want to put the microphone on? Yes, yeah, and then you have three minutes.
I speak to object, oh, sorry. I speak to object on behalf of five adjacent properties, including Robbuck Cottage, and Felstead, and East Beer Cottage. This is a new development in a countryside location, which would set a precedent. Firstly, we wish to dispute the premise that there is an essential need for more self-catering accommodation in the area. It's extremely well-served. Uplands Hotel Droxford, fifteen million pound eco-tourism regeneration project, providing twenty-two chalets, Wallops Wood Holiday cottages, eight units, accommodation for up to fifty-four people, swimming pool and sports facilities. Wrigley Tinn, Droxford, Shepherd's Huts, Scotts Haven and Rooksbury Park, caravan parks, now open all year long. Tower Farm Garden, holiday lets, Brocklands Farm, caravan site. Fifteen Airbnb or similar self-catering properties in Soberton, Newtown, and Droxford. Seventeen self-catering properties in and around Wickham on sites. All managed on-site, all within walking distance or cycling distance of the Forest of Beer and the southwestern corner of the park. Two, we would like to add that there will be serious loss of amenity, privacy, light, and quality of life for longstanding residents, particularly those at East Beer Cottage, Robbuck Cottage, and Felstead, which are joined the proposed development. Mrs Lynch will be completely overlooked in all rooms at the back of her cottage, and will lose light when the screening grows. Three, an unmanaged and unmanned holiday site represents many possible noise, litter, and security issues. Doubtless, any problems would have to be policed by neighbours and not the absentee landlord. At no point has the developer suggested he provide supervision at this site. As highlighted by the parish council, the problems of unmanned holiday accommodation are well-documented. All the proposed mitigations are completely unenforceable. Four, local tourist destinations cannot be reached other than in a car or a torturous journey via public transport. Provision of bikes as part of a sustainable tourism policy has been proved ineffective due to insurance issues. Children on bicycles in Kingsmead represents a really high risk. Dog owners now park cars on both sides of the road, and drivers are very often totally unaware of the dangers. Tourists at the site will get in their cars to go shopping or to visit tourist sites, they can't stop them. This will make the scheme unsafe and environmentally unsustainable. Five, planning permission has been denied since 2000 at this site because of the closeness of the access, and because it's a new development in the countryside. The hamlet of Chippewa and Kingsmead is a low-density, staggered settlement in a national park, a sensitive environment. We are naturally anxious to maintain the integrity of the hamlet, and not to set precedence for future developments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and very well timed. It could be some questions of clarification from members of the committee, but no one seems to be indicating that, so thank you very much for coming along today.
Oh, councillor Cook, you didn't have your hand up when I looked. Is that all right, Chair? Sorry.
Yes, go on.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to go back, if I may, do you, if I may ask this question, do you actually sit on the parish council?
No.
Okay. Well, one of their concerns, all right, was about the increased lighting in the rural area.
Yes.
It is, you reeled off a massive list of accommodation there. I didn't realise there was so much, to be fair.
Yes, there is.
In such close proximity. But I just wanted to understand, I didn't hear that in your speech. I appreciate the lady sitting behind you to your left is.
Resident of East Beer.
Is a resident, and she will be totally overlooked.
Yes.
What's the proximity, do we know, of her property to the hedgerow? I know she's obviously concerned of being overlooked. Do you happen to her hedgerow? Is that allowed to be asked, although she's sat behind you?
No, councillor Cook, I think the case officer will be able to answer that when we come to that section.
Thank you.
We lodge that question. Any further questions? councillor Pearson, could I just remind members to speak into the microphone, rather than, could you turn your light, your light off, off here, because the microphones like to be spoken to directly, so I know it's difficult when you're talking to a person, but it doesn't, the sound doesn't pick up, and it is being recorded. So councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Mrs Denley, difficult to speak into the microphone, ignore you. If you permit, the, as a local resident, could you tell me when those gates were put up at the entrance to Kingsmead from this site?
That was relatively recently, gates.
They were?
They were put up relatively recently, when the access was enlarged. We don't know if they had planning permission to do that at all.
As I recall, there was a hedgerow along there originally, is that correct?
There was, yes, they've taken it down.
I've got to say, at this point, Chair, I am a ward councillor of this area, have not had any discussion at all about this application, even though the Irish Council Chair, sorry, clerk is here, and he will be speaking next, but, so, I had to say that. Was there a hedge there before those gates were put in place?
Yes, there was.
Well, that's what I recall.
There was quite a lot of hedging and trees which are adjacent particularly to Robbuck Cottage, which have now been removed.
Okay, thank you, Mr, thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? No, so thank you very much, Mr Denley, for coming along. The next person is the parish council representative, Brendan Gibbs. Good morning, Mr Gibbs.
Good morning, Chairman. Mr Gibbs is known to me, he's a past clerk for Denby Parish Council, but I don't think we've met in the last four or five years even. Have we? Oh, all right.
So you haven't had, you haven't had any involvement in this planning application? Good morning, Mr Gibbs, you have three minutes, which, the time will start when you start speaking, and off you go.
Brendan Gibbs, clerk, Soberton Parish Council. Parish council has consistently objected to this application. Our reasons are listed in the officer's report. However, in addition to this, we feel the scheme does not fit neatly within the two main purposes of a national park. The plan does nothing to conserve or enhance the natural beauty of the area, nor does it in itself promote the special characteristics of a national park. If in doubt, when these two purposes conflict, the planning committee must put purpose one as its main consideration when determining this application. The area is poorly served by public transport, and will almost certainly result in increased traffic on this very rural road. We argue that this, the following policies do not fit with this application. They are SD eight, dark skies, SD nineteen, transport and accessibility, SD four, the landscape character, SD twenty-three, the sustainable tourism of the area, and SD twenty-five, development strategy. If minded to permit, please could the committee give, provide some comfort that planning condition three will be implemented in full, and that they, that the register will indeed be inspected regularly, as highlighted in condition three, brackets, four. We are here to support the objections of the neighbours, and also members of the general public who have raised objections regarding this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It could, don't go, because there could be some questions of clarification. Other, any questions for Irish Council? No. So thank you very much indeed for coming along today.
Thank you, and I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for very graciously allowing me to speak, despite the fact I raised my concerns after the deadline. Thank you.
Well, the parish council are always very important to the planning service. So the last public speaker, supporter Caroline Jessett. Morning, Mrs Jessett. So are you sure you know the procedure? Put the light on, and you have three minutes, which will be started when you start speaking.
Good morning, everyone. This tour, this application for tourist accommodation was the subject of the application, made shortly after the adoption of the new local plan. The notion of the application followed a positive application theory. The new local plan introduced a raft of new policies, hence which had to be amendments had been made to various matters raised by. The applicant is pleased that officers are now satisfied that all issues discussed by consultees have been addressed, and that a favorable recommendation follows this court. There are just a few points. Sustainability with regard to location was considered. The application site is repaid by the Forest of Beer, Meon Valley Railway. Yes, of the accommodation are expected to arrive by car, but will be encouraged to make subsequent onward travel, put bicycle, public transport. Bicycles will be made available. Sustainability of the location. Log cabins are relatively small, having only two bedrooms each and lounge. Log cabins are expected to be attractive to couples, families, anglers, trout fishermen. They are too small to accommodate large, they are single. With regard to highway considerations, the access provisions meet the requirements of Hampshire County. Units are situated in the northern half of the site, night benefits from these are to be enhanced with a detailed landscaping, provides further screening, and introduced
Thank you very much. Could I start the questions? Could we possibly, Lisa, have, yeah, thank you. Where would the users of the log cabins, where would they put their cars? Presumably they'd arrive in a car.
My eyesight's not that good from here, but there is a plan which shows parking spaces. Don't know whether that can be put up.
So the widened entrance, which we understand was done shortly, but apparently the removal of the hedge and the widened entrance doesn't need planning permission. councillor Pearson? I was just referring to a point that you made about the widening of the entrance and removal of the hedge, which doesn't need planning permission, apparently, but would, would that widened entrance be kept clear of cars, or has it just been widened? I mean, the hedge went straight along the road edge, didn't it? So, yeah.
Basically, the, before, the area in front of the gates, and the gates have been there, well, I first visited the site in 2019, and those big gates that go there then, I've had a word with my client, and he said they were in, they've been in for a few years. In front of those gates, the side, there were some large trees, one of which was taken down, two of which had storm damage. The proposals are now, as shown on the plans up there, to some plants. The proposals are now, as shown on the plans up there, do some planting in that area, that open. But it becomes an access screened, but not that it is a parking area. Parking is beyond the gates, inside the site, out of sight. Apart from glimpsing as you. That answers the question.
Yeah, but it's not green at the moment, is it?
No, but that's part of the proposal.
But it will be.
Yeah, that's part of the proposal. I mean, the landscaping scheme shows planting there.
Yeah.
And if members want additional planting, as long as it doesn't obscure visibility, then additional planting can be.
Yes, when, when I visited the site and we just drove past, it seemed to stick out like a sore thumb, that sort of area, the front area. We have seen the slide of it, but if it's going to be greened over, then that would be better, better appearance.
Part of the, the sale of these as attractive holiday lodges will be to have a lovely environment. Nobody would want to arrive on holiday and think, oh, what have I arrived at?
No, this is true, yeah. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. The local residents are concerned that the lodges are going to be unmanaged, at least directly on site. There won't be anybody there to keep an eye on the tenants. Are you expecting them to be effectively policed by those local residents? What, what sort of management is there going to be of the site? And if there are any concerns, will it be easy for residents to, to raise those with the managers of the site?
It's, it's not practical to have somebody living on the site or, or current on the site. We don't want any more buildings on the site. So, you know, that, that's not realistic. But there will have to be a changeover, there will have to be maintenance of these, of these lodges, both on a weekly or on a letting basis, they're let. And also there'll have to be ongoing management of the grounds because they're quite extensive and there are proposals to enhance the biodiversity, that would have to be managed. I, I assume that my client would be glad to make his management details available if residents had a particular concern. But there must be many thousands of, of units of accommodation these days that have a, don't have somebody on site but are through usually Airbnb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. You used a word back there, but I, I hope you can reclarify that. You said the word sale and I was getting worried there, as in you're selling them. You're referring to renting them, aren't you? You're not selling them.
They're not, what I was trying to do is, you are promoting your particular tourist accommodation. You want it to look good.
Yes, I know, got them on the list.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair, but I too was going to ask for clarification of the word sale.
Just, just for clarification, Mrs. Jessaf, does this plot an independent plot now? Or does it belong to Felstead, the house above that we can just see an edge of?
It has nothing to do with Felstead at all, other than that Felstead, there were or there are rights of access from this property across just the front edge of Felstead's bellmouth. And that was one of the points that was raised very early on as an objection, which was part of the reason for changing access. They had rights, they're relinquishing those effectively by. The only reason it was referred to as land south of Felstead because in planning applications, you need to be precise in saying where the land is. Saying it was in King's Mead would have been a little vague. Saying land south of Felstead.
Yes, I know that was very helpful to us when we went around councillor Cleeran myself. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I know this was a point raised by the parish council, but I'd like to ask you this question if I may. It's to do with the lighting in a rural area. The plans, obviously, unless I've missed something, and I'd apologise for that, they don't show that sort of detail. And because of where I live, I'm, I'm almost fanatical about lighting. So I just wondered what your thoughts are from what the parish council brought to the attention of reference to the light? Because there's obviously concerns about the amount of light that would be thrown out from these buildings. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
I'm very familiar with the fact that you have a dark skies policy in the national park and that it's important to maintain that. The planning officer has, I believe, put a planning condition on requiring that that is covered. And with modern methods, there are actually very good ways of ensuring that it's downlit, not uplit. It's ocean soaked, you know. So I don't, I don't see.
Thank you, Chair.
And councillor Cook, condition eight, it's quite strictly controlled, the lighting. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Mrs. Jessaf, got photographs of the site as the case officer saw, which looks to me as if you've completely decimated any sign of biodiversity. What actually was on that site before you started to mow and remove trees?
The bit that you're referring to, which does look like it's been decimated, oh, you're looking at that one as well. I mean, the front does.
Yeah, well, that's one of the pictures, there are two or three that.
Yeah, the, the front, the front piece has changed and has been smoothed out and that obviously was done shortly after there'd been some appearance of the vegetation there. Behind the doors, since I've seen it in 2019, it's been a moaned field. I understand that years ago it was actually an orchard. But I've not, I mean, I've not seen it cleared. I mean, when I went to see it, it hadn't recently been cleared. It was a field for some time, that was early 2019.
At least it mentions orchard possibly there, but there's clearly no sign in the photographs of any trees actually on the site.
No, it was.
You mentioned some trees have been removed at the entrance for storm damage. Did you get permission from the Foist Commission to remove?
I think that the amount of timber was below the requirement within.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Are we all done? Mrs. Jessaf, you're the agent, aren't you? Yeah. So thank you very much, Mrs. Jessaf, for coming along today. Lisa, anything that you wish to add after you've heard the public speaking?
I think you asked a question about how far it was from Eastbeare Cottage to the boundary, their boundary. I would just, I haven't actually measured it, but because I've only measured it from, to the, the lodge, so which was 30 metres. I would assume from the back of Eastbeare Cottage to their boundary.
Thank you for that. So members, let's move on to our report and we'll start with principle of development on page 38 and 39. Might go over the page as well. So councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification, which actually goes back to the first page of what we're in our pack. It's referred to as log cabins. I think if I read correctly, we're talking about some kind of timber frame with boarding on it.
Yes, I, I think I've changed the wording as I went through the report. Yeah, they're kind of timber lodges, I'll just get the. The plan. Yeah, so it's just basically black stained timber. There's obviously a brick clink and then green. Timber lodge. It's made of timber.
Made of logs would be very different.
No, it's not made of logs.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad you clarified that point. I envisaged loopholes in the walls and defending themselves against the local Indians. But, no, if I refer back, which is because it's the last paragraph of page 39, it also refers back to page 33, the ecological assessment comment. There's ecological assessment is now greater than two years old, so an update visit, a site visit may be recommended. Yet you don't mention that in your report. Is there a particular reason for that? On page 33, the third bullet point up from the bottom of the page. Ecological assessment is now greater than two years old.
Sorry, yes, so that was the original comments and then there's been, it had been updated. So if you carry on to page 34, comments from 14th of July, so there were a lot of, as I said in my presentation, there'd been a lot of ecological, because the, the scheme had been changed. It sort of basically was redesigned, so it, they had an ecological consultant on board. So there's all new reports that have been submitted and assessed. And because it's quite ecologically diverse now, so it, they're all new, so. I put the original comments and then I put the amended comments.
I read also what the park ranger said. How long ago was that report submitted?
That was on original, obviously this was in, brought in August 2020, so it was, I've been, yeah, it's from then, so.
May I come back to the gates, Chair, which said don't require planning permission? And yet not far from here, there is actually an enforcement case about just such a situation where a hedge has been removed, gates of this order being put in place. Is there different policy within the national park from just outside the national park? I don't understand.
No, I don't think there was a hedge. I mean, I've done a pre-app on there before this application was submitted and there's always been some gates there. There were trees along which we've discussed at the access, which have come down. But there was, as far as I know, there's always been a gate there, but it's set quite far back from the road. So I would say it was about two metres.
But there was, there was a hedge there, I mean, it, it's a longstanding boundary hedge within the national parks. I'm a little, I say when you visit, fair enough, I can understand that. But if the neighbours agree, I mean, I, my recollection of that site, there was a hedge along that side of the lane, opposite the woodland area there. I, I, I could admit I've been in the area 59, 60 years, so.
Are we talking?
My memory goes back a little bit farther than your own.
Are we talking about this part here or somewhere else?
Well, the hedge would have come up to the edge of the lane.
This bit here?
Yeah, it's long since it's gone now.
I agree, I mean, I use, I go up there partly every day because I'm, I'm going to the forest for walks with the dog. But then I used to equally live about one minute away up the other road. And yes, the, the whole edge was, was rural and it was certainly green, whether it was a hedge or trees or whatever. But they're not there now, so I don't think there's any point for seeing it.
That is my concern, Chair, but.
Am I right?
I reckon the gates, I mean, the gates with the national park policy, as I understand it, is against a castle wall gate. I mean, you may use that phrase, that's something that the national park policy has said. Yet here we have these gates, which apparently according to the ranger, I just don't understand the difference. I know every site is different.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from because I agree. But I wonder whether this is a fruitful conversation, given that it's not there now. But where you, it's Lorna who's going to.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to clarify that in terms of hedge rows, the loss of the hedge row in itself isn't something that we control unless we establish there's a certain length of hedge that's being removed and it was also a protective hedge. So the loss of its hedge in itself wouldn't be subject to permission if they did then remove it, which might be for widening access, which in this case I think my understanding is that it wouldn't necessarily need planning permission. But there are other cases in the local area that are on classified roads, which then we're looking at enforcement wise with the number of TPO trees that have been lost, which therefore does come under our remit to, to consider and take further action on.
And it's a case by case, isn't it? So I don't think it's useful to refer to other cases at the moment. I saw lots of hams go up. Councillor Reed?
I think I'll wait until debate, it's probably easier.
Any more contributions on the principle of development? Let's open up the rest of the report. Councillor Rutter, any questions?
Thank you very much, Chair. Could I just ask about permitted development, once the site, once the site is built out, assuming it gets planning permission? Are the, would there be permitted development rights attached to these dwellings? These, these, these elements of tourist accommodation? And if so, can we please remove them? Because I don't think that allowing any further extension of the lodges or anything would be, would be acceptable given, given the circumstances here.
Thank you, Chair. I discussed this matter with Dan yesterday and looking at the sort of status of tourism in respect of whether it would be a dwelling house that could be, benefit from the sort of part one class A permitted development rights for householders and it could. So it would be perfectly acceptable to remove those permitted development rights to prevent the further extension of, of the dwellings and insertions in the roof etcetera, should you feel that necessary to mitigate further impact of them.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to propose that we remove those development rights, if that's okay.
Committee, do you agree to that removal of, nodding.
Agreed.
Yeah. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. On the highways, would it be correct in saying that if that proposed new bed is going in to separate the two drives? I think the agent said that it would be a low level. That would be to conform with highway standards, I would suspect. Likewise, any removal of the hedge in where it's been spoken about earlier would also be required because of highway visibility. Would that be correct?
Yes, I did say in, in my presentation that there was one tree that was, that was removed because of, on highways. How much come to council highways?
Councillor Rutter and then councillor Pearson?
Sorry, thank you very much, Chair. Could I just ask about biodiversity enhancement? I, I may have missed it, but do we list things that we are wanting to see? For instance, bird boxes, bat boxes, hedgehog, highway, enabling holes in hedges and fences and things? And if, if not, can we put them in? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so there's condition six and seven. So this has obviously been looked at by the ecology officer, who's obviously an expert at this. So we, we require a biodiversity, biodiversity gain plan. So I mean, I haven't, you know, she's looked at all that in detail. So details will come in about that, but obviously we have a lot of biodiversity shown on the plan, which relates to the ecological surveys as well and.
So can we assume that all those things that I mentioned will be automatically included?
Yes, I would, I would assume, yeah, as much as possible that they can put on there to meet that, the biodiversity net gain.
Is it not possible to just add it into the, we know that it's going to be there?
Is that possible?
Yeah, Chairman, why don't we update condition seven, where it says that the biodiversity gain plan shall be submitted to approved and we could say a detail shall include.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, I think that's very important. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. So many things. Lighting, I think we've dealt with, it's also dealt with in the condition, although I'm a bit worried about that because it's a dark area, surely some form of security. Part of that plan.
Yeah, the requirement will be for lights that shine down.
Yeah, so to say there's no security lighting, that would be.
Yeah, so to say there's no security lighting, that would be worrying. But I'm more concerned about, you say that the proposal holiday let will be generally additional, generate additional nights mitigated. Fair enough, that means we're sort of fine, dealt with off-site. So how actually is the foul water going to be disassembled on this site? Or is the polluter allowed to get away with it?
No. There is proposed sewage treatment plant. So that's all been dealt with. They provide details of maintenance and all that sort of thing, which is part of that condition for the nitrates. So as well as paying the nitrate credits, they also need to put in the maintenance of the sewage treatment.
So there's no chance, Chairman, that any foul water could get down to the main, which is downhill from this site?
No, I think it'd be.
I would have.
Like any other.
I think it'd be destroyed. Yeah. And finally, you mentioned correctly the walks around there, but I don't recall any easy access to those walks, particularly the Main Valley Railway Walk from this site or this area. Pilgrim's Walk you can get into from Westwood, and you've got the issue of crossing the road to get to the Main Valley Railway. Now, if this is a plus point for this, question mark, A thirty-two is a busy, dangerous road.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's, the South Downs by its nature is rural. You're not going to have a hundred percent sustainable. It's difficult. It's difficult. You're not going to have a hundred percent sustainable tourism. You know, they're not all bunched up in one corner that everyone's going to go to because they can walk there or cycle there. But they do connect up. So you have got the, you know, some of them do connect up. But then obviously, you have car parks at West Walk.
True.
Which is, you know, is what I've tried to explain that.
But that's the other side of the road, not the big road.
So yes, we're not expecting everyone to get there and then not ever use the car. But, you know, I just don't think it's realistic.
Well, I'm being realistic there. You know, that's my concern.
Yeah, it's just weighing, weighing everything up.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Any more questions on anything left in the report? You can see that the update sheet has altered or strengthened condition three. And we've agreed to remove permitted development rights and we're adding, we're strengthening condition six. So councillor Reed, did you say yes?
Just going back to the wastewater, is it not normal that this would be shown on site, the plan in the past?
There was, it is actually a position shown on there. But obviously, I think that needs to be determined once.
Turbent.
The drainage. I think there's. We have the National England nitrates. Yeah, I think that's, you can, it's in between those two trees. I can't find it again. It says.
Legends are unclear.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to get there. But there you go, condition sixteen, detailed proposals, total power surface water, including of the package treatment, should be submitted to, I think, get details of.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to raise the point, actually, that, and concur with councillor Rutter, because on page thirty-four, on the original plans, the South Downs National Park ranger has come up with some excellent ideas. So I'm rather hoping that they will, those ideas will be put forward into the condition of condition seven, the biodiversity gain plan. But the South Downs National Park have, obviously with their ranger, has clearly put some very good points there. So can those please be considered and worded in the document? Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I guess I'll check through the enhancements are and then go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're at the point of debate. councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I am very aware and sympathetic of the concerns of local residents because I can see that potentially this could be a nightmare for them. However, this proposal has been significantly amended following concerns raised by officers. We have two small lodges which cannot be extended. They have no permitted development rights now. So what you get, what you see is what you're going to get. And I know that the management is here today and they will have listened to those concerns. And I'm sure that they will closely monitor the lodges. And if there's any, any at all, you know, they will be dealing with it. And that is my hope. And I'm sure that they will want to have good relations with the neighbours as much as the people who stay in the lodges. I'm pleased to see that cycles are provided. And I do think it's a sustainable site within the National Park, which is what allows it to become holiday accommodation. Whilst there is a lot around, it's an incredibly popular thing to do now. And it's a key element of the National Park, that providing, providing suitable tourist accommodation. So I think that in time, it will be well shielded by the new landscaping that is proposed. The biodiversity, clearly there's very little on site at the moment. That cannot help but be significantly enhanced. And so I'm happy to support the officer's recommendation with all the very strict conditions regarding lighting and everything else that are here. Thank you.
councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Well, like councillor Rutter, I'm very aware of the attractions of this location. We're at the presence of the Roebuck Hotel, within literally spitting distance. Not that I'm going to encourage spitting from this site, or even from the Roebuck Hotel. That's an additional amenity. There's a small car park there, which would be useful addition. I'm also aware, as I think all the committee is, that one of the policies is to encourage tourism in the South Downs National Park, but also to encourage biodiversity and preserve biodiversity, which clearly has not happened on this site. It's very difficult. There may have been an orchard many, many years ago, now long gone. And it's more like a pasture now. And a farmer is allowed to mow their site. And that's uncontroversial. It basically is now, looks a bit like a rather wet lay pasture, which, again, that's acceptable to the National Park, no issue at all. The holiday cabins themselves, you know, I would say to the neighbours, I understand your concern about being overlooked. But the single, the single, no bigger than a garden shed, certainly not the height of this room, should have to be to overlook beyond the proposed landscaping around the outside of this site. West, the woodland in behind, it's a wild woodland, literally in all meaning of that term, that the Main Valley Walk goes up through. West Walk itself, riddled with walks, it is attractive to tourists, and no doubt it would be for anybody on this site. You'd have to cross the A thirty-two, and there is no crossing. And you're coming at this site with traffic travelling at fifty-plus miles an hour. You hear motorbikes, my goodness, you hear motorbikes. And it's not, because that is not peaceful. Well, the wildlife is actually used to it now, ironically, even if people aren't. And I know people in Kingsmead will be very aware of the sound of traffic on that site. I mean, it's from, not on that site, but on, from the A thirty-two. I'm disturbed by it. But everything one might say, and the security lighting, that does disturb me. It does need security lighting. This situation, there's no local manager there. But it's got to.
Sorry, sorry, councillor Pearson, your microphone's gone off.
Sorry. It's secondly, I'm talking too much, folks. I'm coming down to, as reluctant as it is, I support your proposal. I don't like it, but I can't see any planning reasons to say no.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. councillor Reed, no, councillor Cook, was it? Reed and Cook, yeah. Oh, just Cook. councillor Cook?
Chair, I'm fine. I'm happy for councillor Reed. Thank you.
Here's me wanting to give my voice a rest. Thank you, Chair. I think a lot has been said. On page fifty-five of our report, you will see the entrance. And that, to me, doesn't show any stumping at all from any vegetation that's been cut down, just by looking at those photographs. I may well be wrong, but the photographs clearly don't show any stumps on the, in the ground. The, as councillor Pearson has already pointed out, the A thirty-two is an exceedingly busy road. And in fact, according to my little sat nav system, it's a sixty mile an hour road. So it's fast and it comes round on a sort of double bend just up the road. There's also a road junction coming in from the south, sorry, from the northwest, northeast, just prior to this junction that we're talking about, property is going to be located. So I do have some problems with that. I'd also have some very great concerns because, as I think originally said by one of the speakers, in order to get out of that site to go across to West Walk, it'd be safer to take a car, to be quite honest, because crossing that A thirty-five is absolutely treacherous. I do feel sorry for, or concerned, not sorry, for the possibility of the neighbouring property, the very close one. But it does look like there's a sixteen, fourteen metre gap between both the properties. And with the vegetation growing as it is, hopefully it's going to be all right. Internal lighting, I think in the page thirty-four, and where, I think it was councillor Cook said, in additional lighting really does need to be considered. And I think that is covered by the condition that we've put on. And I think what the ranger has said makes a great deal of sense. So it can be blended in. They know exactly what they want and how to do it. We've not said a vast amount about the water feature. Presumably, this site will possibly attract younger children, along with their parents. Children and water, there is a health and safety issue, which I don't think has been addressed anywhere in the report. Otherwise, Chair, I think like councillor Pearson and other members who may, I can't see any reason for turning this application down as long as we bear in mind some of those points that I've brought out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I've just checked with Julie Pennick. Do you want to say something about the lake or water feature?
I think whilst, you know, health and wellbeing, safety can be material planning considerations, there are other bodies that will deal with health and safety of people. You know, planning is basically a land use, isn't it, matter? I suppose a repercussion of health and safety may be that the pond needs to be enclosed. But I think you heard from the agent that it's envisaged that this will be, they're small lodges, there won't be children there. But, you know, I think the agent indicated maybe sort of, you know, couples. But I couldn't say who would stay there, Chair. But I think it's an interesting point. And we may deal with the repercussion of that. But I think.
councillor Cook?
I don't need to say anything, Chair. I will be confirmed. Thank you.
I myself find this, like councillor Pearson, very marginal because there are many houses along this Kingsmead, all in large plots. And I think the idea that this is going to be used for tourist accommodation, well, I don't know. But it will mean the use of the car. So the bit in the report that said, oh, you know, you won't need to drive to the car park, well, that is, as councillor Reed pointed out, the other side of an extremely dangerous road, lots of accidents and even deaths. There have been several deaths just shortly up from there. So you wouldn't want to dash across. There are footpaths, though, once you've dashed across. There are footpaths into the Forest of Beer. If you're wanting to come to the South Downs National Park, which is in fact the widest one, the length, you know, the length of it is the longest in England, then, you know, you wouldn't come to choose to go at this very extreme edge. This is at the edge of the National Park. So it doesn't quite add up to me, but it does accord with our policies. It does accord with South Downs National Park policies. The SD twenty-three, they are very nice holiday chalets in appearance. There's going to be a lot of extra biodiversity. So I don't feel totally happy in granting permission. But I can't see a reason, like councillor Pearson, for not granting permission. Because it does accord with several policies of both authorities. So this has been recommended for approval. We're going to add an extra condition removing permitted development rights. Condition six, we're going to strengthen. Was that over the biodiversity? Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If I could just help. I think based on what we've heard in sort of with members' questions, debate, and the update sheet, your officers are now proposing that condition three be amended as per the update sheet. Condition seven is amended to include, to make sure we include, that the applicant includes in their biodiversity plan various species that were referred to by councillor Rutter and the ranger. And then in, and then in addition, the additional informative six, seven and eight, which are on the update sheet. And then members asked us to remove future permitted development rights. And your officers are recommending that we remove, if I say it's Town and Country Planning General Permitted Development Order twenty fifteen as amended, that we schedule two classes. We're recommending A, B, C, D, E and F of Part One and Class A of Part Two. Yeah, so that's, Class A to F is about the buildings itself and then roof alterations. And then Class A, Part Two, is about boundary treatments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pennick. But I didn't quite hear what you were saying. So the removing of permitted development rights is a separate condition?
That's correct, Chair. Recommending a further condition, yeah.
So including all those changes, which Mrs. Pennick has just listed, this has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
That's all members, Chair?
Thank you. So that's. So that application has been approved. Members, would you like to take a break? Or, yeah, so we will now take a break until. So, we now come to agenda item seven, which is Totford Sawmill, Totford Lane, Northington Orford, and it's the construction of a single dwelling with associated landscaping and parking, following the demolition and removal of the existing buildings and structures, twenty-two stroke oh oh seven oh four stroke F U L. And the case officer is Cat Watson. When you're ready, Cat.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for demolition of the existing sawmill and ancillary buildings and the construction of a new dwelling. Here we can see, in the top left hand corner, we've got an aerial photographic view of the site, so the site is here, and in the bottom right hand corner, we can see the site as it currently is with the sawmill and other buildings. Here we've got, in the top left hand corner, we've got the existing buildings shown in plan form, bottom right hand corner, we, we can see a photograph of that. Then we've got the Nissan hut and barn, again, right hand side, we've got the photos, left hand side, we've got the plans of that. The proposal is, as I say, for a new detached dwelling within the plot, following demolition of existing buildings. So, on the left hand side, we've, we can see the plot, the new dwelling situated to, to the south, in the south corner of the plot. We've got an access coming in from Totford Lane, just at the bottom here, and then to the left, we've got Pack House, a neighbouring residential property. The right hand side, we can see some photos within, of views of the buildings within the site and the access at the bottom there. Here we can see the elevations of the proposed dwelling, so it's, it's quite a large property, timber clad and plain clay roofing tiles. And here are the ground and first floor plans, so ground is at the top, first floor is at the bottom, so there are a number of bedrooms in the, on the top floor, also another bedroom on the bottom floor, along with living accommodation. Here we can see photographs looking towards the road and the yard storage area at the bottom there. And then another photo at the top left hand corner, within the site, looking towards the barn, the sawmill barn building, and then along, looking along the road from just where the access is, looking to the east. That concludes the presentation, Chair. My recommendation is to refuse for the reasons set out in my report. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we move to the public speaking, and the first public speaker is the Ward, one of the Ward councillors, councillor Margot Power. Good morning councillor Power. Yep. Well, you know the routine, and when you're ready to start, you have five minutes. When you're ready.
Thank you, Chairman. It's always a comfort when I can agree with officers in a planning report, it makes everybody's life a lot easier, I hope. And, as you know, I have been strongly supportive of retaining employment land in the rural areas, it's essential to economic development. However, there are a range of conditions suggested that I can support. There's a condition for screening, there's a condition for bat and bird boxes, and there's a condition for the grampian condition, which I don't know what it is, but I'm sure it'll do its job very well. Detailed and acceptable treatment of foul and surface water can be conditioned. I do have a question for officers on the foul water. This is in the catchment of the itching, and more particularly, the Candover brook, which suffers very badly from algal growth, which is a consequence of phosphates and nitrates. I would like a condition, if possible, to ensure that P N N is removed from seeping into the groundwater, and I'm, I'd like to hear officers' advice on that, please. Which leaves us with the loss of employment space. I think the lack of a viable and suitable economic use for this site has been proven. It has led to nuisance to the neighbours for some years, and as you will read in the officer's report, there is contamination of the site. That which remains, for me, the matters of principle regarding loss of unemployment site in the countryside. And my argument is that MTRA 4 should be set aside, in this case, in order to prevent further nuisance to the neighbours and further contamination of the site. The M15 and DM23 are also a factor, and the officer's report states that there would be a loss in the rural appearance of the site. I was very glad to see, this is Watson, that you showed the current appearance of the site, which does not present a rural appearance. The terrace will not be seen from the road, as I understand it, and will be screened by the planting on the eastern boundary and the northern boundary. And there will be mitigation on the site, which will, I would hope, prevent further damage to the environment of my ward. Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Power. Any questions? Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Power. So I take it that you consider that the proposal to put a house on this site now has not only your support and the support of the parish council, but the support of the near neighbours and wider community as well?
That is in the officer's report, Chairman, that the local neighbours and the parish council support this application. To go ahead.
Thank you.
Any further questions for councillor Power? Councillor Edwards?
Councillor, you seem to have, and you've referred to the possibility of residential use or other employment use. Is it, in your view and that of the parish council, is it viable that this might return to agriculture?
I would suggest that because of the contamination, it would not be suitable to return to agricultural use without a good deal of work on it, which would not be justified economically.
Any further questions for councillor Power?
No.
So thank you very much for coming along today. And then we have two supporters, Andy Partridge and John Gibbs. If you'd like to come forward, gentlemen. So your total time, gentlemen, is three minutes, which you can share in any way you wish. Have you sorted out an order of speaking?
I have, Chair. I will speak first, Andy Partridge.
Right. So when you start speaking, your three minutes will start on the clock in front of you.
Thank you, Chair. The site has a lawful B2 use next to a cluster of housing. B2 use covers the whole site, not restricted to buildings, nor are there controls on hours of work or storage heights. B2 use makes an uneasy neighbour with residential. My client applied twice unsuccessfully for permission to redevelop the site for B2 use, beginning in 2016. The last application resulted in a dismissed appeal. The officer neglects to mention in her narrative, the inspector's findings, that it would be harmful to the neighbours' amenities. Instead, the officer relies on a 2010 appeal, where the inspector thought there might be some scope for some form of commercial use. But that was almost 13 years ago. However, we've explored this by marketing the property, following committee's criticism with the last application. That marketing has yielded no deliverable offers. Your estate department gives support for the proposal and considers there are no commercial alternatives, given the constraints of the site. The site is brownfield. Policy CP9 of the core strategy allows for alternative uses on an employment site where there are benefits. The MPPF, paragraph 122, also encourages planners to take a positive approach to applications for alternative uses. The scheme makes use of brownfield land, removes contamination, removes commercial traffic, provides a self-build house, and removes a B2 use, which is a benefit to the neighbours. Planning is about localism. Parish council and residents support the development. And what is sustainable development if it's not about making places better for people? The scheme will achieve that.
Good afternoon, I'm John Gibbs. Both of you are the applicants and the owner of the site. We brought the site in October 2014 with the intention of developing the commercial use. We originally applied twice for planning permission to redevelop the commercial use, beginning in 2016. However, the second application was dismissed on appeal, primarily because of concerns about the effect of B2 on the neighbours. As the viability report shows, it's not so suitable for an alternative commercial use. Therefore, we decided to apply for a single residency as a modest alternative. That scheme, as you may well recall, criticised mainly because the property had not been marketed, but concerns were also levelled on the design. We undertook a year-long market campaign, but with no deliverable offers. Your estates considered the site does not have any prospect for alternative commercial use, and the marketing campaign reconfirms the viability assessment. We have amended our design, and as a self-build, makes this an affordable house for us as a local family. We feel that removing a harmful B2 use and applying for a family house, which we intend to build and occupy on a brownfield site, is a more sustainable outcome. Removal of ugly buildings with a single attractive family home, that has a lower ridge height and an existing main buildings, overall footprint is smaller. I would also hope that you would appreciate that we have adapted our plans on the local feedback and engagements.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any questions for either Mr Partridge or Mr Gibbs? Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. May I just ask, how long has it since there's been any regular on-site activity? It been quite a while?
When I brought the site, the site had been redundant for nearly 30 years. We brought the site after the previous applicants had got a lawful use certificate. So we presume we brought it, and thinking we were going to carry on and develop the site, but we've had no joy with that. It has been shut for a long, long time.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. You said the marketing time was about a year. But you then said no considerable... Can you just clarify the word?
No deliverable offers. In fact, do you want me to... We had one offer, and they pulled at the last minute, because their reasons were that there were no future planning prospects for the site. That's the reasons they gave.
With all those historic buildings?
Any further questions? No, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming along today.
Could you just switch off the microphone?
So we move to our papers, page 69, principle of development. And it goes on to page 71. Any questions? If not, can we go on to page 71, impact on the character and appearance of the area?
Sorry, Chair, I'm wrong. Is it just possible to react to the second appeal?
Yes, I should have actually asked Cat if she had any contributions to make after the public. So apologies, I didn't do that. But councillor Reed is wanting to talk about the appeal? Second appeal?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the second appeal for the 2017 application, so 16 application, yes, the inspector determined that there was the existing use on site, there was no evidence that it would be significantly harmful if another use of a similar type were to occur on site. It wouldn't be significantly harmful, additionally harmful, to neighbour amenity. The main issue that is a question here is, does a new dwelling in the countryside comply with planning policy? And no, it doesn't, as set out in MTRA 4. And also, the loss of a B2 use on the site doesn't comply with CP9 of the local plan part one, which requires retention of such sites. So, yes, I've taken that appeal decision into consideration, where the inspector dismissed. And I think the reasons are set out in my report. But fundamentally, that's the question for you to debate. It's set out clearly in policy terms, and that's the committee to discuss. Thank you.
Can I also then ask, how long do we believe the site has actually been vacant?
I'm not aware of how long it's been vacant for. I imagine the agent may be able to confirm that, but I don't know how long.
I think you heard from the public speaker that they said the site had been redundant for years, so to say differently to that, Chair.
Normally, I'm not allowed to accept extra contributions, but would you like to verify that it is 30 years? So 36 years. So any further questions on principle development? If not, we'll move on to the impact on the character and appearance of the area. Could I ask, it's a four-bedroomed property, which is not a small property. What is the size of it internally?
Chair, I don't have that measurement to hand, but if you review... If I can get the presentation back screen, I can show you the floor plan. So here we've got the floor, proposed and first floor plans. And then we can see here, the site as a whole, and this is the area of the new dwelling and terracing, and the development's sort of concentrated in this bottom right-hand corner. So whilst I don't have the exact figures for the area of the building, hopefully this sort of shows it within its context, as the sort of size of the proposed dwelling.
Could officers tell me that would we normally accept a four-bedroomed property, you know, for development in the countryside?
Chairman, it's really difficult, because I think the starting point would always be whether the principle of development was acceptable. And then you might, if you were thinking the principle of development was acceptable, you might be looking to say, well, what's the, you know, making efficient and effective use of the site, what does that look like, and how does it, you know, clearly this is a sort of a larger site, and, you know, if we were looking at saying the principle was okay, you know, should you have more than one here? This is obviously quite a large, substantial, four-bedroom house, in my view, in the countryside, so it's contrary to our policies. So I don't, it's really hard to then jump onto. You know, we do have policies that talk about retaining the stock of smaller dwellings, but of course, this isn't here to start with, so it's really hard to comment on that, Chair.
Councillor Pearson?
Yes, Chair. I'm struggling to compare redundant industrial buildings, sawmill, as being more, having lesser impact on the appearance of the area than a home. How would you rationalise that comparison?
Thank you, Chair. The buildings currently there, they don't really, they're sort of fairly well-established, have been there for quite some time. The, in comparison, if there was a new dwelling with all the various other residential sort of development around it, terracing, parking, garden area and so on, that would be contrary to policy and would introduce an incongruous feature into a site where historically there hasn't been any residential development. So if we're looking at it from a policy point of view, the residential development would not be in keeping with the rural character of the area. And I think I've set that out also in more detail in my report, which is, I think I've set it out in my impact on character and appearance of the area, which is page 71.
Yes, Chair, that's the bit that I'm, you know, questioning. We've got redundant industrial buildings. Now, evidence, which I presume has been accepted by the county, that this is not marketable as a site, or at least it had no acceptable offers, I'm not quite sure what that means. And so basically, what are you proposing? It's turned into an industrial museum. It is a brownfield site, we favour development on brownfields. It means removal of these redundant buildings and all that goes with a sawmill, which, I don't know if you've ever heard of sawmill in operation, it is, noise is horrendous. Scream of a saw, cutting high-speed saw, cutting timbers. Enough said on that. And yet, architecture of the building seems to be acceptable. What then do you expect to happen with the site if it's not marketable?
If I may, I think we need to just take a step back and say it's not the job of the local planning authority to find viable uses for this site. That's something for the applicant to consider. We have to assess the proposal in terms of our local plan policies. Now, the starting point is, it's obviously an employment use in the countryside that can operate within the confines of any earlier consents. I think you heard from the agent that it's well-established, isn't it, without any condition? So that can occur without the need for any further consents from us. There are other regimes that can deal with noise, statutory nuisance. So from a planning point of view, we're here looking at whether the redevelopment of this site for a residential dwelling is acceptable on planning terms, and your officer advice is that it's contrary to your local plan policy, MTRA 4, and also CP9, loss of employment, although I think one could argue that given that there's been none operating there for 36 years, perhaps, you know, that is a bit of a moot point. But I think in terms of, you know, our role, it's not to find a viable or deliverable use for this site, it's to say whether the proposal is acceptable in accordance with our policies. And your officer view is that it's contrary to our adopted policies, Chair, and we just can't recommend approval to you on that basis. Thank you.
As Chairman, a clarification. In the emerging local plan, has that policy you're quoting changed in any way?
Chairman, I can't quote it here today, and it's premature, it isn't even going out for its Regulation 1818 consultation until November, but I would say the premise was still on, directing new housing in sustainable and appropriate locations. So yeah, my view would be that that policy would continue. I can't obviously talk about the specifics here, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask, in terms of principle of development, if this was a barn in the countryside, could it be converted into a house under permitted development? And can you tell me the difference between a barn and these buildings? And given that it's a brownfield site, and in my consideration, it actually is a sustainable and appropriate site, because it's two doors down from a busy pub, and although it's in the countryside, it is within easy walk or cycle of a village community.
I think they're deciding who's going to answer this.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully I can help with that. The site currently is not in agricultural use, it's got a B2 use. If it were an agricultural site, and there was a barn there, and it met all the criteria regards to conversion, structural, being able to convert it structurally into a new residential property, then yes, in theory, you could do that under permitted development. But it's not an agricultural site. But it's not an agricultural site, so it's not something that could be taken into consideration here. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, if I could add, there are policies in the local plan that allow for the reuse of existing redundant buildings, but that's not what's before us. So whether it's a, you know, whether we're looking at reuse or not isn't what's before us, it's a new build in the countryside. And I think, you know, if there was a proposal come forward for its reuse, if it was suitable of reuse, that would be something, as Cat said, that we'd have to explore separately.
And councillor Leing?
Is this within settlement boundary of the hamlet? Because you've got a community place just up the road called the Warpack, and there's quite a nice little community there.
Thank you, Chair. No, there's no settlement boundary for Topford, though it is Clasters countryside in accordance with the local plan. Thank you, Chair.
So questions on anything else in the report? We've done the impact on principle of development. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. If the committee was minded to consider that actually this could be in our local plan, it would be perfectly reasonable to add a lot of conditions that could, for instance, take into consideration the point at the top of page seventy-two, which would encourage the use of indigenous planting to integrate the new development within the surrounding countryside land. And that sort of thing could be conditioned, couldn't it? If we considered that, the very special considerations around this site, that it's a B two site, that it's brownfield, that it's sustainable, that it's effectively a brownfield site, those sorts of things, that the concerns about nitrates and everything else could be effectively conditioned.
Should the committee decide to commit the application, then yes, there are a number of conditions that can be included.
But the nitrates situation, sorry, I drank the water there on my way. The concern about nitrates is not the reason for refusal, is it? It's because it's against policy.
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
Chairman, just before you go into debate, I just need to clarify with the officers and the management team. Catherine, you've referred to on page seventy-five, the proposal is still therefore considered unacceptable through policy CP nine. I don't see it carried across in your reasons for refusal.
Yeah, that's correct. It hasn't been referred to in my reasons for refusal.
So you would, I think then, Mrs Hutchins, if you're minded to, just to make that concrete too, obviously, if members are going to debate and find in line with officers' recommendation is quite crucial, so that the applicant can understand, obviously, on appeal points.
Sorry, thank you, Chair. I'm just checking, I've also got the report from the twenty nineteen application, so I'm just going to double-check. And it wasn't, it wasn't in there either. So, yes, it's not mentioned in either of my report or my previous colleague's report about CP nine.
Yeah, indeed. If I can push you on that, sorry, Catherine, it's just on page seventeen, notwithstanding the above, you say that policy CP nine carries considerable weight, and you leave that, if you like, planning judgement still up in the air. You don't carry it across to your reasons for refusal, so you want it in there or not. I suppose it would help members before they go on to debate.
We're just checking the policy.
Chair, if I could just check the appeal decision, because we just want to be consistent with what the inspector said before, just to be sure before we add it or not. But it is a strong issue, as Dan has outlined as well, but I just want to be sure about whether we introduce that. So if you give me time to just re-check the appeal decision.
Shall we go on with questions, because Mrs Minnick can answer those. So councillor Leing, followed by councillor Reed.
It would cover what I was going to say.
Do you have a question, councillor Leing? Councillor Reed?
Chairman, forgive me if I'm reading this incorrectly. B two is general industrial, but it does say it can change to B one and B eight, part three, class one. Have all these been taken into account when marketing's...
Thank you, Chair. The marketing report was reviewed by our estates team, as they would normally do on such an application. The estates manager, he agreed that the marketing report was carried out correctly. He also then went on to state that he didn't consider that there was any other viable use, other than residential, which obviously has been taken into consideration, but it still doesn't overcome the policy conflict. Though it has been looked at by our estates team, and their comments have been noted, but in balancing the pros and cons of that, it still doesn't overcome the conflict with local plan.
Can I just ask a clarification question on CP nine, policy CP nine? So I've got it in front of me here, apologies if I look away whilst I do this. So retention of employment, land and premises, policy CP nine in the local plan, the final bullet point on there. So read with the top, losses will only be permitted where retaining a business use would not be reasonable, having regard to the following. Final bullet, the benefit of the proposed use compared to the benefits of retaining the existing use. So what I've heard is, the benefits of retaining the existing use, with the site having been not used for thirty-six years, the marketing feedback that we've had saying they couldn't find a viable use for it, is that a policy reason why we could change the use of that land under CP nine? Final bullet, the benefit of the proposed use compared to the benefits of retaining the existing use, in that the benefit of the proposed use with residential is greater than keeping the existing use as an industrial site?
I think Mrs Minnick is answering this.
Thank you, Chair. I think then you'd need to look at MTR eight four as well. You can't just take one policy in isolation. Planning balance, you'd have to say, well, this is a site in the countryside, which is contrary to MTR eight four, and then you would look at CP nine. And our view, I mean, my view is that, I guess they could do, carry on the existing use there, but it's been lost for thirty-six years, isn't it? So, you know, whether there's a best intent use that could carry on there, I'm not persuaded that residential's the only option here, Chair, in terms of your officer recommendation. A new dwelling in the countryside, which is...
How are we getting on with the inspector's...
The inspector dismissed the replacement of the B two use under MTR eight four alone, and some other DM policies, but not CP nine. And it is our own decision for the later application that was previously refused that we need to be consistent with, so which wasn't actually appealed for the loss of the B two use with a new residential unit. So on that basis, we hadn't introduced it previously. It would be my recommendation not to introduce it now.
I can feel that councillors are sort of looking for a use for this site, and I know it's not our job to find a use, but what sort of use could be acceptable here?
Well, I suppose, Chairman, if we look at MTR eight, maybe it will happen, I mean, I know members know it, but it just talks about being in the countryside, outside those defined areas. The local planning authority will only permit the following types of development. It talks about an operational need for a countryside location, such as agriculture, horticulture or forestry. It does talk about reuse of existing buildings for employment, tourism, or a community use or for affordable housing to demonstrate local housing need. But the buildings therefore should be of a permanent construction and capable of use without major reconstruction. It does allow for the expansion and redevelopment of existing buildings to facilitate onsite established businesses, providing there's an operational need, and providing that's proportionate to the scale and setting of the countryside location. The policy also allows for small-scale sites for low-key tourist accommodation, appropriate to its site location and setting. And then it talks about proposals not harming the character and landscape of the area. So that's MTR eight four, Chair, and what it would allow for in policy terms.
councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. In the past, we used to ask the county, as the judge of the marketing, not that marketing, do we do that now? And if so, have we done that?
That might be, we're looking at equestrian workers, rural workers, potential viable agricultural holding, that's proposed here, this and value with potential for the estate team.
So effectively, you're saying, no, the county hasn't checked this marketing statement, or we've just got the applicant's word, that this, sorry, applicant's agent's word, that this has taken place, hasn't been checked. I'm concerned by the fact, this is a redundant industrial building, which quite clearly, according to the photographs, are rustling to death, and can't do anything with it. And, you know, we use brownfield sites for building. It's not clearly no use, the thought of returning to agricultural land can, agricultural use when it's contaminated land, just, we know that won't work. It's where the policy theory is right.
Councillor Pearson, we're not in debate, we're in question.
This is a question, Chair.
Yeah, well, Mrs Minnick has just...
Because I don't understand the system, this comes up with no, 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 no.
Mrs Minnick has just read out MTR eight four with suggested uses, but it isn't the planning authority's responsibility to find that use.
Chair, I'm not saying that. Saying is, was the accuracy and viability of the marketing of this site checked by the county as we used to do in the past? Apparently, we don't do now.
No. But I'm surprised we don't check it.
We have checked it, Chair. We checked it with our estates team, our ex-chartered institutional players, and they checked over the viability. And I think Cat mentioned that in the reputation. So we're not at odds with what that's saying, I don't think, Chair, at all, but in terms of our consideration to you, we say it's contrary to MTR eight four, and we can't support residential in the countryside, Chair. I don't think we're saying that there are magical viable options, but that isn't our role to find viable options, Chair. Our job is to assess this proposal on its merits, development plan, development plan has an option against new residential dwellings in the countryside, Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions on the report? No, so we're going into debate. Debate? Councillor Reed?
Someone's got to start, Chair. One thing I noticed on this particular application, there is no garaging. Not that it has to go in, but it just seems rather strange to have a rather large structure being proposed with no carriages. I think councillor Westwood, CP nine, MTR eight four, as you've heard me say many times, was a poorly put-together piece of wording, along with MTR three, because it can be interpreted in different ways. We have a site here, but working within our policies, as we do at the moment, about new dwellings in the countryside, I perfectly agree with that. However, what do we do with a site that is becoming more and more disorganised, falls into a dangerous situation, especially if children get in there? There is, you know, I'm not quite sure how to get out of this particular hole that we've in a sense dug ourselves with our policies. It's one that we haven't covered. If it had been a structural barn, already pointed out, we could well have turned that into a residential dwelling. This is an industrial site, which has seemed to have gone through all of the phases of advertising to various usages, but still has not come up clear. Now, thirty-six years on, we've still got a redundant collapsing site. The Nissan hut must go back to the early fifties, I would guess, looking at its design. We must really sort of try to find a way of either taking this site back to an open field, or it's got to be developed in some way. I'm really puzzled on this one, Chair, so I don't quite know at this point in time which way I'm going to be able to vote.
Thank you, Chair. I'll go along with a lot of what councillor Reed's just said. I've known this site for at least thirty years, and we've had this before us on one or two occasions, where we've been struggling on it. I think we need to come to a conclusion on it. I think that there has been proved that there is no industrial use or employment use that we can find for this site. I think that in the position it's in, it's, the public transport is non-existent as such, so therefore, a rural exception site would be difficult. Feel that this is probably the only thing that could actually work on in the site. So I'm quite in favour of this, although it does go against our policies, but we're policies in not always serving the community. And we found this out when we looked at the Old Forge before this, so I'm in favour of accepting this application.
councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I also am struggling with this one. Recognise exactly what the dying policies say, dying because they're looking at replacing those policies. And one of the issues we've had many years is anomalous statements within the policies. Frequently, I'd argue about that, those anomalies. For example, when you've got series of bullet points, one sometimes enough to approve or disapprove, but as if you looked at the other three, let's say out of four, you could argue, well, these actually are in favour of this. And this happens so many times, and one of the things in the emerging policies is that a lot of those anomalies are being removed, which is good news. Meanwhile, we are stuck with policies that don't work in favour of what should happen on this site. Far as I can make out, what should happen, according to the policies, is that those buildings are going to be left there as a relic of the industrial past. And I don't find that acceptable, quite honestly. I then look at other policies that are in favour of building on brownfield sites. This is a brownfield site. It's clearly because of contamination not viable for agriculture. We know that, we've established that, even though the policies suggest that is an option we could use. It just didn't work to say, okay, put cattle or crops onto contaminated land, it's a no-no. It just doesn't work. It just doesn't work, and it's, I find that unacceptable as an alternative solution. The, I recognise what the policies say, I've got no argument about that. Will this fit in this area? Well, one of Catherine's photographs actually shows across the boundary frame, it's a similar building, which looks relatively new. Now, how did that building appear when we can't put a similar building on this site? If one of the issues might be overdevelopment of the plots, rather than the whole field, well, the whole field, it's not overdevelopment, then the small plot, the place in the industrial buildings, might be an argument. Certainly, to put affordable housing onto that site, you go, hang on, affordable housing onto contaminated land, is that viable? I don't think so, because of the cost of removing that. But I really do find this, that, I recognise, it's a good report you've written, Catherine, but I. Well, I can't say any more without criticising it, so I, because it is a good report, I just don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you. councillor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. I too am struggling with this. It's come to committee two or three times now, various different iterations. And whilst it is in the countryside, it is a brownfield site. It's next door to, next door but one to a pub, next door to a house. It is a unique site. It has the support of the parish council, the local city councillors, the local residents to take this eyesore, which is what it is and has been for 36 years, away and put a small-ish for the area, family house, self-build for a local family, on the site of the existing buildings. Now, if those buildings were in a state to be converted, that's presumably what they'd be recommending, asking for. They're not in a state, you can't convert a Nissan hut into a, into a modern, you know, ecologically minded house. We can condition things that will allow it to improve the biodiversity of the site, to enable it to disappear into the landscape. I don't agree that a housing, a house in this site, a domestic dwelling, would harm the character and the landscape. I think that what is proposed would look an awful lot better than what is there at present. We should remove B2 permissions, because B2, you know, allows all sorts of noisy and smelly and whatever activities. But anyway, we've been clearly shown that there is no viable industrial use on this site. And in fact, I'm sure none of us would want to see an industrial use on this site. It's not, it's not an appropriate location. It might have been 36 years ago, it isn't now. So whilst I am desperately to support our policies which do protect our countryside, when it is countryside, this itself, this little plot, is not countryside, it's an ugly brownfield site in the middle of the countryside, I think that what is proposed will enhance it and not detract from the character of the landscape. I want to see lots of conditions about biodiversity and landscaping and everything else, but I'm afraid I can't, I can't allow it to carry on. I think the community deserves us as a planning committee to do the right thing, and the right thing here is to say, let's change what is there and put in a family home.
councillor Clea.
Thank you, Chair. Like many other councillors, I'm struggling. And I agree and believe in our policies, but this does not seem to me to be right. It's unsuitable for viable employment. It's been not operating for many, many years. I know it's not our place to say what should go on there in, you know, in employment, but I find it difficult. How can this building be any more harmful, a new building, a new house? I know MTR4 again comes into it, but what's there now is awful, to be quite honest with you, and it probably will remain like that for a long time to come. So I can't see it's any more harmful impact on the surrounding countryside than it is already. So, but I'm, I'm so sorry, I very rarely go against officers and plans, policies, but I'm not happy with this, sorry.
councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. I will keep it very short and sweet. I think we've heard already from various councillors their thoughts. I would 100% agree with what councillor Rutter has said. It does, yes, it does go against policy, it is a brownfield site. I will say this to you, the conditions will be absolutely paramount. And I came out of a meeting yesterday where I used the word interpretation. It's great to see councillor Power here and how she spoke, and yes, I would be loath to lose employment, but the best way to adapt this is for housing. I think the word that was used, modest, I don't think it's a modest four-bedroom house, I think it's going to be truly lovely, but yes, the conditions will be paramount, and I know I've repeated myself there, very, very important. Sorry, I don't wish to always go against the officer here, but I would wish to approve this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments? I have a comment, of course, and I disagree with my last few colleagues. I agree that it's an eyesore, but this is not the replacement of a, of, not the reuse of an old building such as a barn, it is the replacement of, which would be allowed, it is the replacement of a building and adding a new building in the countryside, which is against policy, and also, in my view, quite a large property, not a small family home, four bedrooms. I think we've been told that the policies don't accept residential use here, and I support that, and I had criticism about MTR4. Well, at this stage, we're right in the middle of issuing a new local plan, so it will be out for, or is, I can't remember the timetable now, out for consultation. And now is the moment to tighten up on MTR4, not decide yourselves, that, you know, oh, I'm going to change MTR4. This is an exception, because other applicants will use this, even though we might say it's not a precedent, but they will use it as a precedent. So I can't possibly go against the policies that the officers have listed, because they are the experts here. Did any of the officers want to make a final statement before we go to the vote? Cat?
Nothing from me, Chair, thank you.
Chairman, I think I would just, I don't mean to sound silly in a retaliatory way, but I would say that MTRA4 is a very successful policy, and we successfully win appeals on the back of MTRA4. It's not redundant at the moment, it's going to be with us for at least another year, year and a half, the new local plan sort of takes its shape and goes on its journey, and those policies won't have any weight for a substantial time. Anyone to think it's a weak and indefensible policy, because my view is that that's not true, respect, Chair, so I did just want to make that point. As ever, it's up to the committee to reach the planning balance, having regard to the development plan and all the policies therein, and we'll take that forward after your vote, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So this application is recommended for refusal. Those in favour, please show. I thought it might be a lone mission.
Sorry, Chair.
Those against?
Sorry, Chair, could I just clarify? Was that in favour of refusal?
In favour of refusal.
Thank you.
And it's just me. And those against refusal?
Six members, Chair.
Six, thank you. Abstentions?
Two abstentions.
Thank you. So we have to now find the conditions if we're going to approve this. What conditions will we attach to this application?
Chair, before you do that, just be helpful, if I could hear from members, you're going to vote for a contrary view, that, you know, the recommendation to refuse has failed, and therefore, you know, you'll take a vote on an alternative recommendation, I would motion to approve. Would just be helpful for the minutes and how we take this forward, Chair, that we hear from members how we can differentiate this from any other site in the countryside, so that, you know, that MTRA4 is the prevailing policy on land in the countryside, but you're setting this one exceptionally aside in your decision-making for a number of reasons. And I think it would just help, sort of, if we can add that to the minute, Chair. And then I think Catherine could help you with a list of suggested conditions, Chair, that perhaps would be delegated to you and I to fine-tune prior to any decision, depending on your, on your next vote, Chair, thank you.
I can see that councillors want to add to that. From my point of view, councillor, the committee considers it an exceptional site. I'll let the, I won't go on, I'll let the members say why they voted the way they did. councillor Reed, then Laming, and then Cook.
Chairman, I think firstly, it's a site that has no future within the business section, employment section. 34, 36 years has proved that to doubt. It's a brownfield site. The only way of tidying it up is to alter its, alter the registration of that land.
Thank you. councillor Laming.
I think that sums up my opinion precisely, thank you.
councillor Cook.
And if I may add, Chair, is it possible to refer to the marketing that was held? If I can add that. And also, the conditions would be operating times of the build, i.e., you know, Monday to Friday, Saturdays, et cetera.
That's normally an important.
As it should be, but yeah, thank you.
councillor Pearson.
Yes, Chair, you asked us to refer to any precedent where this similar sort of thing has happened. It's a can court precedent, and it was in Solbiton, where there's a redundant horticultural site, which, and the basshouses are falling to ruin, it's a dangerous site, and we had a similar battle with the policies as to whether a house should be built on that site. No, it had to be a replacement of an employment site. And it was so patently ridiculous, because what we're going to be leaving was a dangerous site, because there's glass all over the place. In this case, it's rusting buildings which are going to become a children's playground. Kids are fascinated by this sort of thing, they'll be all over it. It's a dangerous, it's going to be a danger. Let me finish first, Julie, I know you're going to respond to something, so I won't go on too long, unless you, don't let me finish. And this was just a similar sort of thing. It was again, a disseminated settlement, no bound, no development boundary around that settlement, next door to a right-of-way, which is the main party railway, you'll remember it, Chair, because you were on the committee at that time.
Yes, we don't normally compare sites, though, we're here to discuss.
I don't think Julie was round at that, sorry, I'll rephrase that.
We need to say why this is unique.
Yeah, I think.
We need to say why this is a unique site.
Yeah, I think, sorry, councillor.
Well, I'm quoting a precedent as to, and I'm looking at that, I've got that in my memory, as to why I disagree with Catherine's very good Redden report, but I just don't agree with that in my background, within my mind.
What you're saying is that it's not much of an exception, because we've given permission in a similar site before. That isn't probably relevant, all the officers to note down, because they really want to know why the committee has voted to grant permission. I've got one more councillor wanting to speak, and I want to say something. councillor Westwood.
Right, thank you. Going back to policies, then, MTRA4 does actually have in its preamble, it talks about buildings in the countryside where they're no longer in use and so on, Julie. So I'm looking at that. The final sentence on this is that the existing structure is an often accepted part of the landscape and is good to appropriate to provide them, for them to be used productively, through reuse or for them to be redeveloped. And then there's conditions about what you redevelop them with within MTRA4. It does talk about change of use into residential, it makes reference to affordable housing, in brackets, to meet demonstratable local housing needs, which we've heard, there is a demonstrable local housing need. I know it's not affordable. And then I refer to the CP9, which I referred to during the questions as well, which, where the benefits of the proposed use compared to the benefits of retaining the existing use need to be taken into account. So we've all heard that this has not been used productively for employment industrial use for circa 36 years. And we've also heard that it's got the absolute support of the local residents, the ward councillors and the parish council, and all the benefits that they cited for changing the use to residential. So that is the reason why I have voted in that direction.
Thank you. Can we remove permitted development rights?
We can do, Chair. I suppose I have to say why you thought that was reasonable, necessary on a large plot like this one.
Yeah, it's already a large, in my opinion, it's already a large-ish house, not modest, and I think I would like to prohibit further development, for further building.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, the committee, I think, what I was asking you just to sort of help, suppose, weigh up is why this is exceptional, because what we wouldn't want is every site to come in, you know, and say, well, we've got a nil use as well, you know, there's a viability argument here, there's this, there's that, the other, what you, because it's contrary to policy. So I think what I'm looking at you to say, obviously, I can't say these words for you, they have to be your words, but why in this case you're making an exception, a departure from your adopted policies? And I think what you're saying, from what I heard in debate, was that, A, you think it's obviously previously developed land, you think the loss of the employment use here has benefits to the wider community, which is what CP9 talks about, and that's in terms of that you believe that the removal of the building, the contamination issues, that the impact of a heavy B2 use here with its transport and noise could impact, and you're weighing in favour more of the opportunity for this new development to enhance the, sort of, you know, do away with the contamination, to enhance biodiversity and the landscaping, and that, you know, there isn't a suitable alternative use here. So therefore, you're weighing in favour of the planning balance in terms of your environmental, socio-economic, and on the basis of the evidence on this case, Chair. I think that's what, you know, I've heard from what you've said, and I would want members to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'd want you to say that's what your position is, but that's certainly what I heard, Chair, you know, that this is an exceptional site, you know, you don't want to see this repeated everywhere in the countryside, but there are great, you know, real material planning reasons why in this case you're weighing the other way in your planning balance against MTR4 for those reasons that, you know, you'll either agree with or not, Chair, thank you.
I think, Chairman, the length of time of in operation is a major factor.
Could I just say, I totally support what Julie suggested, I think it is, it is a unique situation here, and we would, we would support the proposed reasons for accepting this.
Well, we don't know that, because we haven't asked the committee.
I would, I would support them.
Yeah, okay. And I would like biodiversity down as a condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've drafted a list of potential conditions. So conditions one and two are the standard time limit and approved plans. Condition three, I suggest a detailed condition regarding materials. Condition three, I suggest a detailed condition regarding materials and detail, details of joinery, windows, doors, roof, that sort of thing. Condition four would be surface and foul water drainage, the standard condition for that. Condition five, a detailed landscaping plan showing boundary treatments, any other types of landscaping, hard landscaping, including the parking and access and turning areas, use of native hedging species, any other sort of landscaping type that comes under the landscape remit. Six would be ecology. So, there's already a report that was submitted with the application, and our ecologist recommended that be implemented. But additional to that, we should really be looking at biodiversity net gain on the site, and also, as an integral part of the build, swift bricks, bird boxes, bat boxes and so on, which is a recommended, but for all sort of new housing applications. Number seven, contaminated land. Again, our contaminated land officer recommended pre and post commencement conditions. Link to that, I would say, we'd need a construction environment management plan, so we can control, we can use that to control hours of working, but also mitigate any runoff or dust or noise from the site. Then, we've got sustainable and low carbon energy, so they'd have to achieve high standard of energy efficiency. If there are any low carbon energy sources that can be used, such as air source heat pump, we can work the condition so that if that is something that we can include with that. And then, just finally, parking and access. Yeah, sorry, we could include that in the contaminated, in the landscaping condition, but just to make sure that there's a, you know, that that's regularised. And then I know the question of removal of permitted development has arisen. I don't know what, you know, whether that's something that members will want to have, but that's also an option there. Thanks, Chair.
I did just say, we will need a nitrate mitigation series of grampean conditions so that we are satisfied that the off-site nitrate mitigation is mitigated. Yes, and we'll, it'll be nitrates in this case, and we'll recommend a condition, Chair, on that basis. And I think in terms of removal of permitted development, perhaps would be, as I suggested to members earlier, that you remove classes A, B, C, D, E, and F, class A, and then remove permitted development rights of part two, minor operations class treatments.
Thank you, Chair. To follow on from Julie Pinnock and yourself as well, Chair, I noted that in the parish council's notes, it referred to no provision for a garage or garden storage had been made. So, I think their concerns were that, because now that we've referred to the permitted development being taken, they were worried that they would come back and then want to then build a garage, for example, but the application is for parking. So, I just wanted to know what the clarity would be that on the conditions, if I may. Thank you.
That would be subject to a separate planning application if they wanted to. Is that what you're going to say?
It was, Chair. I was going to say, well, you know, when you take your vote, if you're minded to approve this, you will be approving a dwelling on this plot with its curtilage. And whilst we are suggesting the condition to you to remove future permitted development, that would only mean that it couldn't be undertaken without the benefit of planning permission, and any future proposals to extend or enhance or add curtilage buildings would require planning permission, and that would be an assessment that we'd have to take at that time, depending on the scale and nature of those.
May I ask, Chair?
councillor Leaming.
Thank you, Chair. Also, can we think about the condition that all building materials are offloaded the main road on the night?
We've got a construction management plan.
Yeah, because that's quite a narrow road.
And councillor Pearson.
Yes, sorry, Chair, to interrupt what you're saying. The new building regulations refer to carbon reduction with the condition you quoted, Catherine, that cover those issues, or whether those issues be automatic? Because it has a lot to say about electricity and carbon reduction now.
I think you mentioned energy.
Have they actually finally come through? Because we talked about them in George's room.
I'm not the expert here.
Chairman, I'm not the expert on the building regs either. What I can say is, at the moment, our local plan policy requires the energy to reach, what was, and water to reach, what's the code for sustainable home level four. So, energy, that is still above the building regulations. And then for water, it's a hundred and. They're going to catch up.
And also, CIL, is it applied in this single building like this?
Did you say SIL?
Community infrastructure, like.
Okay, I think, SIL, I think you heard the applicant say that they would apply, they would dismount build, they intend to live in it, so I expect they would claim an exemption, Chair, but obviously, there's still that legislation. So, on that basis, I doubt there'd be any further contribution. There are a range of criteria on that, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
So, this application with the reasons. All right, councillor Reed.
I'm sorry about this. I note at the front of the building on the first floor, there are two verilux windows. Will they be shielded, considering they're right on the edge of the countryside?
Chairman, they're in the countryside, but I think, you know, given, I don't think it would be reasonable to require, that we don't have a dark skies policy or a dark skies reserve, so I'm not sure it would be reasonable to require blinds or some sort of film affixed to it. I'll leave that there with you, Chair. Thank you.
We do quote the South Down National Park in the distance from. I agree, but light does not stick to boundaries.
Chair, you know, we've got a condition for materials, windows detailing. If it's appropriate to look at that, then we, that's, we've got the remit to do that. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, they're not objecting, are they, to this proposal? So, are we done? So, this application has been, no, we're done that bit. So, we are now on the, we are now proposing that this application should be permitted with the conditions as suggested by Cat, and the usual informatives about working hours and so on. So, all those in favour, please show.
Any members, Chair?
Yes, everybody, I think.
Sorry, with the chairs, that's nine, sorry.
So, that application is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cat. Hello, Jordan. We move then on to applica, yeah, agenda item eight. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming along, which is two detached dwellings with detached double garages, land to the south of Abingdon in the High Street of Sherrill Heath, and it's twenty-two stroke oh-one-one-oh-six stroke F U L. And the case officer is Jordan Wiseman. And so, when you're ready, Jordan, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start my presentation, just one quick verbal update on top of the update sheet. There was a bit of a typo on the update sheet. It's reason for refusal three, which has been amended in its wording, not reason for refusal two. So, I'll begin my present. Yes, sorry, Chair. So, it's reason for refusal three, which has been amended, and not reason for refusal two. Sorry for the confusion. To, yeah, begin my presentation, first slide here shows the application site hatched out in orange here. The next slide shows the site location plan outlined in red. This next slide again shows the application site outlined in red, but with a slightly more zoomed-out view to show the extent of the gap between the nearest residential property, Abingdon here, White House, which is the next nearest residential property, and then the old Hail House. So, this is the gap between built development as it currently stands. This is an existing site plan of the site. This next slide shows the proposed site plan, now with the two proposed dwellings within the site, and the two proposed detached garages forward of those front elevations. The next slide is another site plan, but just showing you the roof plans of the proposed dwellings and the detached garages. This is the proposed elevation. Both dwellings are of the same design that are proposed. This is the front elevation. The next slide is the proposed rear elevation. Again, just to clarify that both dwellings proposed on this site are of the same design, so both would appear the same. This next slide is the proposed side elevation for the dwellings. And the next slide is the alternate side elevation for the proposed dwellings. Next slide here shows the proposed floor plans and roof plans, ground floor on the left-hand side at the top, and the proposed first floor on the right-hand side, and then the roof plan underneath. This next slide shows you the proposed elevations and plans for the proposed detached car garages serving the two properties. This slide shows a proposed street scene. The top one is a slightly more zoomed-in version of the street scene, and then the one just underneath shows you another view further back with the full view of the two other buildings either side. Moving on to site photographs, this shows the proposal site looking east. This is the nearest residential property, Abingdon, and then on the right-hand side here, you have the rural barn, which is on the other side of the property. This is another view of the site looking northwest, visiting access into the site here. Another view of the application site, which is just up here, taken further down the road looking northwest. Next view of the application site is looking south down High Street. The application site is just to the left inside here. Another view, again, looking south down High Street, with the application site would be sitting just on the left here. That concludes my presentation for this application. The recommendation is to refuse. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Let's move to the public speaking. So, first, public speakers are the parish council representatives, councillor Charles and councillor Ogden. Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, no, I understand that, and that's fine. And I was going to say to you that you have three minutes in total, so you've talked about that, have you? And you're speaking first? Yeah, yeah. So, when you're ready, and when you start speaking, your three minutes will start on the clock.
We wholeheartedly support the recommendation of the officers. It would be a tragedy if this application was allowed. It would set a precedent of other houses to be built alongside adjacent property. What is more, the council has paid a considerable amount of money defending an appeal that is exactly similar to this application less than a hundred yards away. To note, the appeal was dismissed, and the reasons are listed on the appeal. This application is accepted. Other developers subject to the appeal would submit grounds of precedent. Sheddville Parish noticed that friends and neighbours of this application have written in support. This is highly doubtful if a balanced point of view was given. They enjoy living in the village that has country feeling, filling the gaps, locking out countryside would determine detrimental to all. The developers asked Sheddville Parish Council to remove the objections. We refused and were not influenced by pressure from developers. It is a Sheddville duty to be responsible for the community as a whole. At this moment, the current local plan states that Sherrill Heath is unsustainable. The new draft plan, local plan, states that Sheddville Parish Council, including Sherrill Heath and Waltham Chase, should not have any development. The new plan starts in, at two thousand and nineteen to twenty thousand, no, twenty thirty-nine. There is still original plan development in Waltham Chase. The only area for development, no planning permission should be granted until the new plan is verified in time period being brought forward from the old plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Don't go, because there might be questions of clarification for you from the members of the committee. councillor Reed.
It's a question of, in the report, it reports, it says, the old Hail House. Was that the old Prince of Wiles? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, your microphone's not on.
Oh, so sorry. Yes, I've ignored the two supporters, Chris Westbury and Tom Francis. Is it just you, Mr Francis? Yes, you're welcome.
Good morning, councillors.
Sorry to have nearly missing you out, and you have three minutes when you start speaking.
No problems. This site is a managed residential garden with the adjoining house, Abingdon, on its north side, the garden of Rosely Cottage and other neighbouring properties to its rear, and the White House, the barn and derelict house on its south side. The assessment that this application is contrary to M T R A three is simply incorrect. It is clearly infill of a small site between, between developed road frontage and further development. This is clearly visualized on the location plan and the street views. The point that the barn is commercial is irrelevant, it is still developed road frontage. Other sites on Sherrill Heath High Street have been approved with longer road frontage than this application. The loose grain of the proposed application still allows for visual gaps. The S P A and nitrate neutrality was only understood last Wednesday. We submitted an ecology report with the application, and despite chasing it up, comment from Winchester's ecologist never came. The S P A fee has now been paid, and a copy of the nitrate neutrality budget is now with the case officer. The objection that the two houses are identical cannot be upheld. There are numerous cases of older modern houses in Sherrill Heath which sit next to each other and are identical. The choice to submit identical elevations was led by our contextual analysis of the village. M T R A three goes on to state that other applications do not meet criteria, may be allowed where an application demonstrates clear local support. The reason this application is before you today is because fourteen households from the village wrote in clearly to support the application. The majority of these households are directly alongside, opposite or behind the application site. I would ask that the committee consider when a planning application for new housing last received such overwhelming local support. All the requirements of M T R A three are met. The houses have been designed with car, carbon neutrality in mind, they are all electric with car charging points, P V panels and heated with air source heat pumps. If refused, I will appeal, but this will mean that I will have to lay off eleven people at a really bad time. They all live in the Winchester district. I was hoping to bring an alternative site forward, which was granted by the committee fifteen months ago, but unfortunately, in the fifteen months that have transpired, Winchester City Council have not been able to come up with a section one oh six agreement. I therefore ask for the committee to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, don't go, because there might be some questions for you. Councillors, are there any questions? No, so you're free to sit down. Jordan, did you want to say anything in the light of what you've heard from the public speaking?
I've nothing to add from myself, thank you, Chair.
Could you just, Mrs Finnick, elaborate what we heard at the end? About an appeal or? Different site? Yeah, okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to our reports, principle of development, and it's on page ninety-four. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm struggling with the third paragraph, well, the next three paragraphs, in fact, where we've, where we're given measurements of forty-six metres. On the site diagram, it says seventy-one point nine metres, which I assume is the front, fronting of the road. But I can't quite get to grips with where all the other measurements actually fit in. I tried doing, juggling around, but I just couldn't work out how it was done. So it's, in that one, it's forty-six metres, which leaves between residential dwelling of Abingdon.
On the recording, we're just looking that up.
Thank you for your question. In response to that, the measurements in the principal development, the forty-six metres distance, is that measured between the existing residential property, Abingdon, and the existing barn structure that I am highlighting there? In the paragraph, following on from, sorry, there's another measurement in that same paragraph. The, the eighty-seven metres distance is that measured between, bringing the next slide, is the distance measured between Abingdon, the nearest residential property to the site, and the White House, which is beyond the barn structure. And then there's another measurement in the, the next paragraph that I haven't spoken about yet, which is the hundred and eight metres, which is the distance between Abingdon and the old ale house. So to clarify, that's what those measurements are on there for.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I just struggled to.
Yeah. And Jordan, could you just explain to me, could you go back to the one that shows the red line and the blue line? Yeah, was there any reason that the blue line at the bottom hasn't been used for this application?
Thank you, Chair. So the, the red line shows the, the application site where the development is proposed.
Yes.
The blue line shown on this location plan shows other land within the.
I know, yeah.
The, the ownership, so.
Yeah.
To, but in answer to your question, I, you know, I'm not sure why that wasn't included in, in the red line.
It's not, it's not possible to get a vehicle down the thick blue line at the top and then access the, the bottom bit. I'm just asking out of interest, not part of this application.
Possibly. It, it might be access left there to the rear of the application site.
Right, okay, thank you. We're still on principle of development, any further questions? If not, then impact on the character and appearance of the area. Then we go on to lots of headings, including historic environment, neighbouring amenity and sustainable transport.
Yes, Chairman, if I may. We're back to the Southdown National Park. We're now one kilometre from the border, and there is a verilux window, which I think may actually face the park.
Got a comment from the Southdown National Park.
Are we going to ask for a shield?
We're recommending refusal.
Sorry, Chair, if this goes to appeal, that may well get overlooked if it's overturned. We don't make a comment on it.
I think we've heard what you've said, Chair, I think in the event an appeal, that it's normal protocol that you suggest a list of conditions to the inspector in the event that he's minded to approve at that point.
Any further questions? Then we get on to ecology and biodiversity. And drainage, and anything else, the conditions or informative. Jordan, it is recommended for refusal. Do you want to just elaborate the reasons for refusal?
Thank you, Chair. So the reasons for refusal, number one is that the development is considered to be contrary to policy M T R A three. Point one being that it's not considered to be the infilling of a small site within a continuously developed road frontage. And point two, it's not considered to be development which is of a form compatible with the character of the area and results in the loss of important gaps. Reason for refusal two is with regards to the design of the dwellings, it's not considered that the two dwellings are particularly rural in appearance, and they are identical in how they appear, which is, again, not, not considered acceptable in, in, in this location. And the, the final reason for refusal is to do with impact through nitrates. Again, just to clarify that that has been resolved with regards to the second part of this reason for refusal three, for the impact on the silent S P As as the mitigation payment was received yesterday. So that's been, that part of that refusal has been withdrawn, but the, the impact on nitrates and a budget calculation wasn't received during the consideration of the application.
Thank you very much. I think it's just helpful to know where we are with all those reasons. Right, so I think we've reached debate. Councillor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. For me, this is absolutely clear cut. It's proposed new housing in the countryside in an infill local gap, and I wholeheartedly support the officer recommending.
Councillor Cleer.
Thank you, Chair. Completely agree with the list that has been read out by the officer, thank you. And it is an important gap, it does not constitute infilling, and it doesn't meet, may I say, a community need, so I support the officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it is a, a large gap, forty-six metres, we'll, we've sorted that out. And Sherrill Heath High Street is punctuated by gaps. Some of those gaps have been built on by modern buildings and some haven't. And this really adds to the countryside of, of Sherrill Heath. This is in the countryside, it's not designated for development, and as councillor Cleer has said, it's not infill, it's actually two new buildings in their own right, and I too find them very obtrusive, very sort of in your face, especially with the garages at the front. I, I went through and read on the planning portal all the letters of support, and it is true that most of those letters come from the area. What they most, and some of them seem to be saying is that they feel that this is better than having it built over by a housing estate or whatever, which is, it is protected by our policies, it's still countryside. And I think that residents don't need to be worried about the use of that site, and I think as a field, a large field, it adds more to the area than two more houses, bulky houses as well. So I, I should be voting to refuse this application. The application has been recommended for refusal. All those in favour, please show.
Sorry, Chair, I think that's seven members.
Oh, sorry, eight members.
And those against? And abstentions? So that application is refused. Thank you very much. And we have one more report to consider. Thank you, Jordan. Agenda item nine, this is the confirmation of a tree preservation order two three one eight, and it's on land at Ivy Cottage, Shoolane, Opum, Southampton. And the case officer is John Bartlett. John, if you'd like to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, committee. So I'm here today to ask for the confirmation of T P O two three one eight. To give you some background to the case, at the time the T P O was served, the council received two letters of objection. The council first received a section two one one notice to carry out a heavy reduction on both the beach and the wild cherry. And following in an assessment on both of these trees, they were deemed worthy of protection. So the T P O was made in May of this year, and so we're seeking confirmation of this T P O today. In terms of the objections that we received, the reasons raised were that the trees are tall and in urgent need of a reduction. There are concerns that trees are exposed to high winds due to their position at the top of a hill.